Right. Well, my clock turned six thirty and I see uh both online and in the room that we have a quorum, so I will call a meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. Uh first item up on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda tonight. Uh first are vouchers totaling four hundred ninety-seven thousand nine twenty-two and thirty-six cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers?
Yes.
Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Okay, and then uh second is minutes for the three-two twenty-twenty-three special me- special meeting and the three-seven twenty-twenty-three meeting and the three-fifteen twenty-three special meeting. But we've got uh three sets of minutes. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, uh we also have a water plant chemical purchase of eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Did everyone receive a copy of that uh of that uh purchase request?
Yes.
Okay, is there any questions or any explanation that you want to provide, Matt, beyond the normal?
The normal, this is, this is pretty normal purchase for us. This will probably go into the summer. Um then we'll see another one sometime in the summer.
Okay. And then finally, we have a liquor license for Vondy's Liquor at five hundred Western Heights Drive. Uh would you care to elaborate on that, Mr. Styles?
Sure, so this is a a liquor license request uh from Sean and sorry, Mike. Uh Von de Camp, that's it, right? Yep, nailed it. Okay, so they are purchasing the um the existing liquor store, but they have to-
R and D.
R and D liquor. Mm-hmm. Uh and so they have to apply for a liquor license through the state, and then the city has to grant that license as well, so. Uh it's it's normal for us to put the licensing through the consent agenda. Um this one's a little weird because we don't, we don't have a a a retail liquor dispensary general. This is the only one in town, so. Um but this is, this is what it's for and and they have come. If you have any questions specifically, Sean and Mike have come, so. Uh happy to, if you have anything to say or-
We just wanted to get in front of you all and-
Meet everybody.
We're excited to come to town, come back to town.
Well, we're excited to have you and and we're excited to keep that business going in Hillsborough, so. That's a, that's a good thing. Any questions regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? Any comments? Hearing none and accept the motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four oh. Thank you, Van de Camps, for coming to the meeting and and we wish you much success in your business endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now uh up to our first public comment opportunity, and I believe you have somebody there that would like to address the council, Mr. Styles?
We do. We have uh Ronald Wilkinson.
Oh, Wilkins.
Wilkins, okay. Uh he has a a presentation he submitted to me and I'll I'll share that so you guys can see it and I'll have it on the board here too, but uh if you want to come on up and introduce yourself, say where you live and I'll kind of key through your-
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
All right, um hello, uh my name is Ronald Wilkins. Um don't want to take up too much of your time, so I'll try to be brief and concise. Uh Martha and I moved uh in December of twenty-twenty-one. We love living here so far. Got a love with the community and met some good people here as well that can call him a friend. And uh pretty much um we were considering getting chickens and adding them to our yard, uh backyard. And looking it up, looking into it, make sure that we're doing everything appropriately, and we saw that the current ordinance prohibits chickens and other fowl from being in within city limits. And, you know, and we asked around to see if um, you know, if this is accurate, this is current, and found out it is, but it's not really enforced too much. But we didn't want to go out and invest uh in getting the chickens, preparing the coop and whatnot, just to potentially have someone report us, and then we have to by law take it down. So I'm just coming here today to see if I can propose amending that ordinance. So.
Yep, no, yep, sorry.
Uh so first, just wanted to uh show what um the city defines as foul and what the ordinance says about them within city limits, so um we have that anything within the species of gallus domesticus, which is chickens, also pigeons and species of peafowl or birds used for food or hunter's game. And uh this is an excerpt from the ordinance that says shall be on lawful to keep harbor, shelter, or maintain livestock or fowl in corporate city limits, exceptions are in the case of fairs, livestock shows, radios, circuses, and when under the supervision of an educational institution, uh doesn't really leave, well, doesn't leave any room for any type of um domestic housing of them in any way, shape, or fashion, and I wanted to figure out first what other communities around um allow in terms of domestic fowl. Um I figured it'd be appropriate to take around a twenty-five mile radius of Hillsborough and also wanted to use cities that have a population of five hundred just to make sure that it correlates well with the size of us, because you know, the city of Durham has different needs than what we do. And uh also included Wichita, just to show a comparison between one of the largest cities of Kansas compared to us and what they would allow, and and the finding out that there are a lot of cities in our area that have less than a hundred people. So that kind of federal. Uh so on the next slide, I have what I found. Uh I'm not going to go through all of it, just going to go through the highlights and found out that for the most part um our community does, is in favor of allowing uh citizens to house chickens. Um and for the sake of transparency, I did include what cities I found that also prohibited them, just to be fair, and found that it's just Galva us that don't allow them. Um and we can see that um we have Canton, Mount Ridge, Heston, I forgot to include Newton, but I have the data here. Uh they allow a range of different domestic fowl between doves, ducks, female chickens, and you can notice that roosters are explicitly prohibited on there, and they also have a wide range of what they do allow, uh ranges from six, as we can see uh in Gossel to Marion, they even allow up to twenty, which that was kind of surprising. And even Wichita, uh you can have three without a permit and any any type of foul over that permit. I mean, sorry, over that, over the number of three, you have to get a special permit, get approved, and then there's a different maximum limit based off of what type of fowl that is. I believe chickens, you can have up to twelve with their permit. And also figured might as well get into some certain problems that someone could have with allowing chickens, especially in neighborhoods and whatnot. The main one would be odor. Uh there is a chance uh that there could be buildup of grime and other waste byproducts from the chickens that could disturb people, you know, you don't want to walk down the street and just be hit with the smell and whatnot. Uh another problem that I thought of would be feathers or eggs or any type of other byproduct from them entering your neighbor's property. Another issue would be the fowl escaping and, you know, running around throughout the neighborhoods and then noise. So these are just some of the major points that I think could affect the decision, and the next slide I have some solutions to it. Uh for the odor problem, you know, just basic housekeeping, just clean out the coop or any other housing routinely, making sure that there's not a buildup. This also, also um keep back on vermin coming in as well. Uh the second one, it will be the owner's responsibility to ensure that feathers, eggs, whatever, does not get into another person's property. This is pretty consistent with just keeping whatever you own within your property, make sure that it's not disturbing others. Um the next would be making sure that whatever housing you have or the fowl has to be secured, and you should have a fence and type of perimeter to keep them within your property as well. And the last one, ask for the noise, would be roost, uh prohibiting roosters. Uh that's consistent with pretty much every other city around here. Roosters are just loud. And with taking away roosters, pretty much any other fowl will be relatively quiet compared to other animals such as dogs, which I I've heard them late at night through my own house, you know, just inside, you can hear the neighbor's dogs barking, and for the most part, having fowl such as chickens, um doves, et cetera, will not produce as much noise. And then for my next slide, I just have just kind of a hypothetical amendment for the ordinance. Uh the person will be to allow them within city room and sparring, uh within city limits barring roosters. Uh there will have to be a discussion as to what domestic fowl the council is okay with being allowed within city limits, of course. Uh the next one will be that they have to be kept in a secure enclosure, enclosure, sorry, uh that has to be clean, free of any type of grime and whatnot, just to provide just quality of living for the actual animals and so that it doesn't doesn't potentially cause an issue for the community. And that also ties into making sure that they're secure, making sure that they aren't just free range, able to go about up and down the streets, potentially getting into other people's yards and causing issues and scratching things up and whatnot. Um this one, this is just maybe a maximum of ten, ten thousand city limits. I know that that will have to be changed more than likely. That's just a number that I came up with, just looking at the different data that I saw that other cities allowed and also also taking into account the size of Hillsborough. Um I also have in there, the number could increase based on the lot, based on the lot size. Some people have bigger yards, so they could theoretically have more chickens without it being an issue that could affect just, I guess, the quality of life for the birds themselves. Um I just have the rough number twenty, just because I just threw in Marion's. Uh but of course, that, that's open for debate. And the last one I have there is that any owners have to obey any ordinances that are imposed um at the risk of a fine or potentially having those privileges to keep the fowl revoked. And on my next slide, just conclusion, uh the current ordinance that we have, it's it's there, but it's not there, you know, we don't really have a way to enforce it. And it's kind of unusual based on the rural community that we do have here. Um the next one is that certain domestic fowl can be permitted and for all intents and purposes are not much of a nuisance that can be seen from neighbors. And there are other ordinances that can be applied to the fowl to help regulate them more, such as with dogs, you know, just keep making sure that they are fenced in. Making sure proper hygiene is done for them and just cut back on any issues that could happen. And my next point is fowl can be an asset for certain families, whether pets or meat, eggs, regardless, as long as they are adhering to the regulations in the city. And there are many families that already do own fowl, whether they are aware of the ordinance or not. I had to look it up myself, or I wouldn't have known, and I probably would have went out and got chickens. Um but I'm glad that I looked it up, and I know that it's not an excuse to be breaking the city law, but it does kind of enforce the idea that it is possible to have fowl within the city limits without it being an issue. Um as long as people are being neighborly, doing their due diligence to make sure that they're taking care of the animals well, just so that they aren't causing any type of disturbances for their community members. So thank you all for your time and just wanted to share that.
Blue, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Are there any questions that that the council has for Mr. Wilkins? Um is this something that uh uh we want to uh want to see about uh uh pr- pr- trying to put some kind of an ordinance together? Would that be the council's desire, or we want to put it on a future agenda and bring it up again?
Well, there are fowl in town.
That is true.
And there are.
Are we talking, are we talking F O W L or F A U L?
F O W L.
Okay.
And there are roosters in town, too. I've heard them.
Yep.
Um so they're here. True, we. So I don't think the ordinance is being enforced too heavily because
No.
many of them are quite obvious as to where they are. You can drive by or walk by and see them.
I haven't heard of rooster for a long time, so you must live more by the earth.
There was one that, there was one this morning, I heard it.
Yeah, so we uh the tactic we've taken with this is basically if there's a complaint, it's kind of complaint-based. Uh we're not actively on the hunt for chickens. Um so i- if we we have run across it occasionally where it's been an issue, usually it's a rooster. Um then we've taken action on it, but it's been pretty minimal, honestly, so it's one of those things.
I have no idea whether, I don't remember past, I knew something, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. It's been in the code for a while, so.
Probably was the roosters.
Yeah, I imagine so. It's easier to just sort of ban everything than it is to kind of carve out these exceptions. A lot of times the a lot of times the rules with chickens are either a flat number or there's some kind of formula based on the lot size. Goes into it, and then you kind of get into other things like do ducks count and do this count? I think Marion counts two chickens per one duck or something like that.
One duck is equivalent to three chickens.
How they came to that, I don't know, but yeah, there's lots of little nuances to those.
I don't have a problem. Chickens, I, you know, roosters might be a different ballgame.
Yeah, well, this would be a way that you could specifically just say, no roosters, then you know, we could, we could enforce that a little easier.
When I'm kind of my yard lays an egg, they probably won't get the egg back.
Right. Eggs are, eggs are expensive still, so, yeah.
So what's the uh desire of the council? What, how would you like to respond to this request today?
Well, I wouldn't have a problem with Matt writing something up so that covered what
I think.
All the, all the things in the presentation, you know.
We could draft something, put something in there.
I'm, I'm in agreements. I'd like to see something on paper first before we make sure.
Yeah.
So I guess the direction then would be for the city administrator and the city attorney to to get together and try to put something together as maybe a draft ordinance uh taken into consideration some of the things that Mr. Wilkins has brought to our attention. And I do want to, want to let you know that I appreciate you bringing this up. And uh you know, most people would just go ahead and do their own thing, but you went to the, to the effort to uh to do your homework and and bring some good information to the council, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll uh we'll do that and then we'll bring that up at a future meeting, and so uh stay tuned, Mr. Wilkins, and uh we'll uh we'll see where this goes.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other, is there any other public comments? Any, any other uh people wanting to address the council? Okay.
I think we're good.
All right, so we're going to move on to our business agenda. First item is consideration of ordinance thirteen sixty-five approving a forgivable loan agreement with K D H E for K P W S L F totaling one point one million dollars, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is the, this is our loan, well, forgivable loan, can't call it a grant, it's forgivable loan through uh K D H E for the iron and manganese remediation uh to do a pilot project and then hopefully uh install a system that can combat that in the high times and the summertime when we get that. Uh this was awarded back in fall, um and so we've, we've gone through K D H E's process. They have a lot of publications and things that have to happen. Uh and so this is, this is the point now where we look at their actual agreement. Um Triple Wolf Garrettson, Andrew and JT take a look at it and I made some adjustments, I think, to the agreement and then also to the ordinance. So the ordinance that you have, it came in, came in a little later, but um what it does is essentially authorize execution of the agreement, and you know, we dedicate that we're going to repay it, even though it's a forgivable loan, so. Uh it will count against, well, not count against, it will, it will appear as a uh an obligation of the city until it's completely forgiven. Um so that's something to to be aware of. Uh we've also got a legal opinion we have to issue on that, and uh Andrew's got that ready to go for this. Um so uh you know, thirteen sixty-five is just the um allowing the execution of this agreement pending all, all the the contingent steps are met, so have you anything to add to that, Andrew?
No, that's, that's about right. But if you have any questions, your matter I can handle.
Just out of curiosity, what age is meant to their proposed agreement, you know, and?
Oh, we didn't necessarily make changes to their agreement actually. Some changes we made in previous forms for K D H E made their way in, so that's, that's good, the, the, the agreement they provided, which is fine. Uh we did, we did have to, you know, adjust the ordinance to match Hillsborough and create closing certificates and opinions and stuff, but yeah, no big deal.
Hey, any quest, any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, we will add, accept a motion to uh to uh adopt ordinance thirteen sixty-five approving a forgivable loan agreement with K D H E for K P W S L F totaling one point one million dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman by?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Uh ordinance thirteen sixty-five is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Uh second item, consideration of an agreement with E B H for design and administration of said K D H E K P W S L F project, Mr. Styles.
You really got that acronym. Because I screwed up every time. Uh so this is the agreement with E B H to do the design and the administration of this project, which we've agreed to with K D H E. Uh we have Mike Younger here to talk about answering your questions. Um one of the things we we are doing uh sort of in advance of this is we're asking for a sole uh source purchase authorization from K D H E to buy the chlorinating equipment, that, well.
Chlorine dioxide.
Chlorine dioxide equipment. Uh it's, it's specific to one producer in the state. Um it's a certain side, there, there are other companies that make larger sized units, but this is the one that we want and need because it's the appropriate size for our thing. Uh for our project, it's fifty-eight thousand dollars, but we need pre-authorization from, from K D H E in order to do that, since it's a single source and not go through all the bidding process. Uh it's, it's kind of critical that we get it ordered and installed before summertime because it's part of the pilot project, so we have to prove that it works, and the only time you can prove that it works is when there's actually uh stuff to treat in order, which comes in the summertime, so. Uh we are doing that, and uh I, Mike, I'll turn it over to you for any kind of comment or?
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, Matt, so um uh the first thing that we would work on after we got the all the agreements in place is to get the um sole source approval so we could have the city purchase that chlorine dioxide generator, and then we'll work with the water plant crew to get that full-scale pilot up and running. Um so when the iron and manganese hit this summer, it's in place and ready to go. If you go through the traditional process, that can get, get pretty strung out, and we don't want to miss that window of things. Things tend to move slower than you always think they should when it comes to that, so we want to do everything we can to position ourselves, so we're ready when iron and manganese starts hitting the plant. And then that, the chlorine dioxide, it's a substitute for uh the traditional chlorine they use out at the plant. The benefit of it is, is it's a it's a stronger chemical and it doesn't create the byproducts that the, the chlorine does, so it's going to allow them to treat that iron and manganese and not get the, you've heard the T H Ms and the H A As. Um you'll avoid.
Bad stuff, yeah.
The bad stuff.
Cancer-causing stuff, we don't want, yeah.
So we'll, we'll get the pilot going and then kind of in the background be working on the, the primary design for the rest of the improvements we're going to make out there with the remaining funds.
Hey, when is the project expected to be completed?
Uh I, I've been saying typically a year of design and a year of construction. This is going to be one of the first projects in the state that has the hundred percent made in America requirement, so we're still kind of seeing how manufacturing is going to match that and have products available to us. So um could, could potentially be some delays. We do have the clearance on the chlorine generator for a hundred percent made in America on that, so that's a benefit, but still like to hold to that year plus a year.
Okay, cool. Twenty twenty-five. That's what K D H E is projecting to on this disagreement, so.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, I would uh consider a motion to approve the agreement with E B H for design and administration of the K D H E K P W S L F project.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agreement is approved. Our third item is consideration of twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four property and liability insurance renewal, Mr. Styles.
So I sent a copy of that out for you as well, and I've got paper copies here. Sorry, I can't share a paper copy with you guys, but uh this is a full spreadsheet of everything we've got listed on there. Um so the, there's the last page, the page that you got in your packet. That is the renewal cost. Uh, let's see. We are looking at a package of a hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars uh for renewal. Uh they do have some, we, we also had them look at work comp, but um our payment work comp is roughly the equivalent, and we're pretty happy with payment, so we wouldn't recommend making any changes there. Uh there are a few things that they, they, that Act three sixty may, made some recommendations on. Um if we were to look at changing our deductible limits, we could do that and save some money. Um right now, we have uh twenty-five hundred dollar deductible and a five thousand wind and hail. Uh if we were looking, willing to go up to a five thousand on both, we could save uh nineteen hundred dollars, which doesn't really seem like a lot there. Uh if we were willing to go up to a five thousand dollar deductible um on the on the deductible side and a ten thousand on wind and hail, we could save ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is a fairly significant amount. Um right now, the EMC is pushing, pushing us and pushing our policy to go to higher deductibles on wind and hail damage. Pretty common now. We actually have a previous policies have been really pretty generous on wind and hail. Um but they're getting out of that and kind of pushing everybody toward a higher deductible on wind and hail, so. Uh you know, that's something, and frankly, we've replaced a lot of roofs already. Last year, I think we replaced three roofs. Um and then there were several of them were over ten thousand dollars, but you know, this is a, and a per occurrence thing, so if we had one big storm that came out and hit all of our roofs or several of our roofs, that would be one occurrence, you pay ten thousand dollars, you do the whole thing for every roof. Where that gets is if there's multiple storms or if there's different types of things. Um so it's That'd be an option, I mean, I don't know, it just kind of depends on what your taste is for, for risk on that. There's that. Uh the inland marine deductibles, we can move that, right now we have a five hundred dollar deductible on inland marine property. Um that's going to be your small equipment stuff, we can move that to a thousand and save four hundred and seventy-two dollars, which. Probably doesn't make much sense. It did recommend that we add crime policy, which is one of the things in one of these spreadsheets that. That protects us against uh employee theft or accidental. Accidental theft of, not accidental, I guess, but if, if you had an employee that accidentally. Did something that caused the loss, uh it would cover something like that. Um usually financial type of thing. Speak a little bit more. Uh employee theft, forgery, inside premise theft, so if somebody stole something from us um. Outsides, premise theft, computer funds or transfers, so if somebody were to be defrauded electronically, we'd have some coverage for that. Money orders, counterfeit money um. For three hundred and sixty dollars, it's probably a good addition to the policy, get a little bit more coverage for some of that stuff. Uh we could raise our auto limits, they did say, you know, your auto limits are five hundred thousand, Kansas tort law is five hundred thousand, there's kind of a max on that. But it doesn't necessarily cover us and. Out of state stuff or, you know, if we're traveling in different areas, so. There's some, something to be said for that, we could add an umbrella. Umbrella policy, which would give you an extra million dollars of liability coverage for ten thousand. Uh and then work comp there at the bottom, we're not really recommending that, we're recommending staying with K-Mit, so. Uh there's a couple, couple of decisions to be made there, I would probably, if, if you're willing to look at it, I would say you could change your deductibles. Uh on wind and hail and. I don't know that that's a huge deal, we're going to end up there at some point anyway um. So it's kind of up to the council what you want to do, but the, the. The baseline renewal is a hundred and sixty-five thousand three seventy-one, and I would recommend adding the crime to the. To that policy, so I would increase it three sixty. But the others I'd leave up to you, if you're willing to look at the additional risk, we could save some money. But it is risk, so.
Questions? Comments?
Well, I think I would agree on adding the crime and increasing the deductibles on that ten thousand, that seems reasonable to me.
Any other comments? Well, hearing none, uh I would accept a motion to uh. To approve the uh, the uh. The bid. Or what are we calling it, the uh? The uh insurance renewal, property and liability insurance renewal with the addition of the theft. Rider and the uh increased wind and hail deductible. Is that where we were at, is that what you were thinking, Brent?
That is.
But it was crime.
Oh, crime, yeah, it's actually the crime writer.
Sorry, excuse me, yep. So would somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Driggers, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilman by seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Um and now we have the additional item. Consideration of sponsorship of one twenty-six North Main application to the HEAL or Heal Grant, Mr. Styles.
Yes, sir, so uh the, this is the old town building, one twenty-six North Main. Um it was purchased earlier this year, the building's owner Eric Driggers has hired Rantzen Financial to write a Heal Grant for them, which is the. Historic Economic Asset Lifeline. Uh through Department of Kansas, they're getting real cute with their acronyms um. So the grants for seventy-five thousand dollars and there, there's a matching portion there, which I think they will have no problem reaching into. Um it's for repair and renovation of historic buildings in downtown areas, so it's a pretty specific. Niche grant um. You can see that this building is on the historic re- historic resources inventory, it's not on the historic register. But it's on the resources inventory, um so there's a sheet there kind of attached for that, so. One of the things, uh what, what the plan is for this money is restoration of the floors on the main floor and then some other main floor renovations. The plan for this building is to uh have. Rentable event space in the main floor uh to renovate the upper floors for apartments or short-term rentals. And then a nonprofit church group is going to use the basement space, so um. Talked with Eric several times about different uh grants and incentive programs, um so this is. This is one that has come up, it's actually due at the end of the month, so. One of the things that we have to, well, we'll have to accompany the application is the, the city has to sponsor it. Uh which basically just means that we're saying, yes, we agree that this is a, a good thing for the community to, for this money to be put into this project. There's zero financial obligation for the city. Uh if, if it is awarded, they work directly with the building owner, uh we just have to sponsor it because it's from the state essentially, so. What they're asking for is for us to sponsor this and do an official motion to say, yes, we would like to officially sponsor this application um. And that'll be the end of it for us, hopefully they get it, I think they'll actually have a really good shot, they've got good grant writers and a good project, so. I think it'd be uh, I don't see any reason not to sponsor the, the application.
Okay, any questions? Comments?
I'd probably recue myself.
Might want to, yeah.
I, I think you can just abstain, Brent.
Abstain, okay.
Yeah. Okay, would somebody care to make the motion that uh the city would uh? Be the sponsor of the one twenty-six North Main application to the Heal Grant program?
I'll do it, I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves, is there a second? Second by Councilman McCarty, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the city will uh provide the sponsorship for one twenty-six North Main for the Heal Grant. Um now moving into uh discussion items. We have uh first up, consideration of a dog confinement code language, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so this came through a citizen uh request um about the issue of dog confinement, so. Sometimes there are dogs in town that uh could be confined via electronic fence or electronic collar. Uh but it may not be relatively, a rela- readily apparent to them. Uh and so sometimes the dogs like to rush out at people who are walking. Um usually the fence stops them, sometimes it does not. Um our language in the code is pretty, pretty general, you can kind of see what it is, I mean, you're not supposed to let them leave your premise. Um so I think Lou had, had talked with Andrew a little bit about this and I don't know specifically Lou. If there's any more to those complaints or anything different to that, but. Um we, we've developed some language here, so you can kind of look at what that looks like. Um for electronic fences and collars, regulation would require a ten-foot setback from sidewalks, uh would eliminate front yards. And then property lines too, you'd have to have a ten-foot setback from property lines, um that's if you're using an electronic fence or collar. Uh there's also additional uh language in there about leashes being no longer than ten feet when off of the property. Uh voice control for animals is not considered confinement outside of the owner's property, so. If you have a really well-trained dog, my dog is not. And you can control it with voice commands, uh that doesn't count necessarily as having the dog under control. Um and then there's some, some specific language about animals being transported, you can't have them in the back of open bed of a truck, basically. Um so what this does is base, it just fleshes out what dog confinement is, uh gives a little bit more. Little bit more direction than what we currently have, so. Uh there are probably some, some things that would have to be answered with this, um you, you do have. Some existing electronic fences and collars, and if you've ever had one of those, they're not exactly easy to move, um so there may be some folks you need to. Grandfather in or do some kind of exception with. Um the ten-foot setback requirement and joining property owners may be sort of difficult for us to enforce, particularly on backyards. Um the actual existing fence regulations say you can put a fence on your property line. Um so it gets a little bit tricky if there's. We don't always have access, I guess, to the rear of the properties to see kind of what that ten-foot setback looks like. Um there are some people who use longer leashes, um ten-foot, ten-foot leash isn't necessarily standard. Um but it's, you know, we gotta have a place to start with something like that, so. Um so there's, there's a few things to think about with that, but we wanted to bring this language up and just have a quick discussion about what it is, if we're in favor of it.
Hasn't somebody been bit or something, or was, what brought this?
No, we, we've had somebody, we've had somebody been, that has been bit. We've also had a number of people that have been forced off the sidewalk. By uh dogs chasing, you know, charging them and uh. Causing people to almost fall and, you know, the dog isn't necessarily getting past the sidewalk, but. You know, if you're walking on the sidewalk and it comes barreling up to you and it doesn't look like it has any kind of leash or any kind of restraint. It uh tends to uh put people off and our sidewalks need to be safe. Places for people, pedestrians to, to walk on and, you know, I prefer not having dogs. You know, with no apparent restraint, rushing people on the sidewalk and causing them to stumble or fall. Especially with a lot of the uh seniors that we have out. Walking on our sidewalks, so. That's, that's, that's where I'm, where I'm at with it.
We don't have family in downtown, or you're talking on the trail.
No, I'm talking about on the city sidewalks, not on the trail necessarily.
So it seems, uh this is just from memory, but when last time we did the, some dog things, it seemed like there was. Some language about having to visually be able to tell that a dog was confined. Am I remembering that wrong, when you guys look, look at the ordinances? So the, the current ordinance. Has a lot of language about what confinement means when it's, when the dog is off of.
Okay.
Off of the owner's property, right, and, and that was, that was all fine, the. When we started looking at it based on the mayor's, the discussions is, is this one that we have quoted in the, in the agenda report here, you'll notice. It basically just, all, all we've ever talked about in the code is. What confinement means off of property, it says nothing about. How to handle a dog that's on an owner's property, so right now, under the code. If your dog stays on your property, they can, you don't have to have a fence, you don't have to have a leash, you don't have to, they can run around as long as they stay on there, but of course, how can you really control that?
Uh huh.
Okay, that surprises me, just in my mind, it, it felt like we had some language in there that um. That was more specific than that, but. Now, there, there are then additional. There's a whole set of additional requirements. If a particular dog has been deemed to be vicious by the police department or animal. Now maybe what I'm thinking, and that we had, we had a whole separate thing for different breeds and for the. That's what you're thinking about. Okay. And that's still there.
Okay.
Well, no, the, the different breeds are not there, we took that language out.
Okay.
The breed language.
Right, right. The vicious animals.
Vicious animals. I, I don't want to, I don't want to get everybody too, too worked up, I'm sure that any dog, any proposed. Dog ordinance will, will uh, will bring out some public comment, I have no doubt about that, and that's fine. You know, we need to, we need public engagement, you know, one of the, one of the big challenges that we have is uh, is uh. Well, there are several challenges, one is. We, our police department spends a lot of time playing dog catcher. And you see that every week in the paper and the police log, uh we also have uh. We also have uh an issue where we require a license. For all dogs that are kept within the city limits and uh. I would venture to say that we're, there's quite a discrepancy between the number of licenses we sell a year. And the number of dogs within the city limits of Hillsborough. So, you know, we've, we've got a number of things that create enforcement issues and anytime we add more enforcement, you know, it creates more work for our uh. For our police department, but uh it's all about being good neighbors and it's all, and it's really for me about public safety in this case. And so, you know, I would like to see us, you know, do everything we can to make sure that uh. We have safe streets and safe sidewalks to walk on and in uh, you know, people can, I, I know we have some sidewalks that need work. Don't, don't get me wrong, I know we, there's some issues there too, but uh, you know. It seems to me that people ought to be able to walk down the sidewalk without uh being in fear of getting, getting bit by a, by an animal.
The most tags I think there were sold on here when I was chief, we had a free flea dip. Yeah. And when people brought in their dogs, should be, the, the vet helped us out.
Okay.
And we filled up tags right over there and we sold a bunch of tags. That might not be a bad idea. Takes a little work, but it worked out really well. Did the dog good, owners liked it.
Sure.
It's, it's an idea you could try, man. I mean, if you want to sell tags, I guess.
Sure, five, five bucks a pop, I think it is.
Yeah, it's pretty cheap.
Pretty cheap, yeah, but it's uh, you know, it, I think a lot of people just. Don't think about it or, you know, don't. Don't renew them or whatever, you know, it's supposed to be every year, but. Yeah, the number of dogs and the number of tags clearly don't match up, so.
I do like the idea though, you know, people walk on the city streets, they should be safe from some dog knocking some. Elderly person over with a long chain, a lot of people pull them in, so, you know, not everybody lets them run. Twelve to ten foot down the sidewalk on Main Street by themselves, you know.
Right.
There's also some potential languages and they're not, is there not, Andrew, about signage? On electric fences, you know, electronic fences that we could ask for, so people would be aware that. You know, the dog isn't going to get, get past the uh electronic fence, hopefully. I mean, once it does and once a dog bites somebody, then, then we have a whole other set of uh. Set of consequences and I think our, our existing ordinance would cover, would cover those kinds of things in terms of. The animal's behavior, et cetera, and that would kick in the potential for a declaration of a dangerous dog. So.
And a dog at the front yard, if it's too close to the sidewalk, there's dogs that will come after you, if they're on a. Chain and if it's longer than what the. Inclining area, so you know, that's something to be looked at, how about people complaining about that too?
So what is, what is the pleasure of the council, would you like this uh explored, because we definitely want to give. The public plenty of opportunity to uh engage with us on this, on this issue. And get some feedback, I think, but uh is there any direction the council would care to provide?
Well, I don't know about the pickup trucks, because you have all the farmers coming to town with their dogs in the back of their truck and I. Have a hard time with that part, but the other parts I think are good.
Okay.
And, and these, you know, this was, this was based on. Ordinances from various other communities, of course, and, you know, just as examples of what you, what you can do, I mean, most of this is within your discretion, so. Yeah, I mean, those kinds of adjustments, just have a discussion and let us know how the, how the council wants to make those adjustments.
Another strategy for dog tags might want to think about would be to um. Instead of the city office selling them, have them at the vet.
Yeah.
Whenever they have their dog cared for at the vet that they. They can't take the dog with them until they get the.
We do that all the time, if somebody picked up a dog, they had to buy their. Tag before they let the dog loose. And if you go in there and get a tag, you have to have the, they check the shot records and everything, so they have to have rabies shots and all that. But that's a good idea, not to let them have the dog back till they buy a tag if they don't have them.
I mean, even if they're going to have their dog checked up, that, that can stick a tag on them and. Yep, I don't know if we need to get that money, we're not making big money on that.
We just bust the tag.
I think it's just keeping track of dogs, you know.
Yeah.
The policeman finds a dog and it's got a tag on it, he'll find, be able to find the owner real quick and that's.
Yep.
Me, that, that's a, it's a big deal.
What does it, what does a tag cost currently, if you don't mind me asking?
Five dollars.
That's it.
Five bucks a year.
Per, is that per animal or is that just?
Per tag.
Okay.
Right, yeah, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no price break for multiple dogs.
That would be a bad.
But there, but there is a, but there is a limit on how many dogs you can have, correct?
Correct, it's three, we have to have a kennel license after three.
Cause I know I've been. Brought to my attention, there's several people that have more than three that have not tagged their animals and so. Yeah.
Yeah, we've handled that again on a complaint basis, so I, I know that's happened a couple of different times than last year.
That'd be hard if the dog keeps having pups, keep it down to three.
Yeah, that's tough. Yeah, that's tough.
Especially if she has eight pups.
I'd like to see the police do a better job of checking some animals out that are tied up to a rope and don't have any water over there, any food or out in the cold or out in the rain. I think that's something that should be checked on. Cause the poor dog can't do anything about it.
We do quite a few of those, especially when the weather is extreme. Uh, we will get calls on that and we do send them out to look at it. We do have pretty robust, it, it comes under animal cruelty kind of thing. So, we do okay with that, I think, but maybe enforcement might be, uh, you can maybe step that up a little bit.
So Matt, what you guys are recommending here is to move forward with proposing an ordinance? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I think, I think you should probably slow walk anything with dogs. Uh, like I, I would put it on for multiple, multiple readings or multiple discussions.
Would a public hearing be?
You can do a public hearing, yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't, would be advisable, probably. Uh, I think it would.
Knowing our last experience with dogs.
Well, there's nothing in there really saying really bad to me. I mean, people can abide by it.
They're, they're all mostly common sense. Yeah, I, most of it's common sense and just decent dog owner behavior, but some people are not good at that. So,
True.
And if you tell, tell somebody that their dog is not a perfect angel or is vicious, that's the, the equivalent of calling their kid a name. So.
I know that's true there because I ran into that a lot of times. That dog wouldn't hurt a flea, yeah. Let this big bite.
Okay, so, uh, so at this point, uh, I, I guess I would ask the council if you want to, uh, if you have any feedback to provide, uh, towards what you would like to see, that you would direct that towards Matt? And he could direct it to Andrew. And they could come back with, uh, with a proposed ordinance that we could, uh, that we could review. And then once we feel like that's something we would want to move forward, then as Matt said, we would slow walk it. We definitely will have a public hearing. And, uh, we'll get as much input as we can before we move forward. Cause I guarantee you, I'm pretty sure we're going to get some.
Yep. I'll make that motion, Lou.
Well, I don't know that we need a motion. It just, it just, I think we've given the, the, the direction. Would you agree, Matt?
Yeah, I think we're good. If you have any questions, comments, things you want to see different, we'll just bring them to me and we'll, we'll get it translated into the ordinance.
Okay.
All right. Uh, moving on to our second discussion item is policy on discounted golf memberships, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So Councilman McCarty kind of brought it up at the end of last meeting about, uh, the golf memberships and some of those things after we discussed golf course things last meeting. Uh, we did with the transition from the Golf Association, they, they had done a lot of, uh, membership kind of trading for services. So if somebody, uh, we had somebody, for example, who goes and picks up all the balls at the driving range and in exchange for that, they get a free membership. So, now that that's come into the city, we've, we've honored those memberships for this year. We really ought to have some kind of guidance as to what that looks like. Um, so what I did was put some of that stuff together for you uh, in a kind of a mock policy or a draft policy. Um, and, you know, what Councilman McCarty had talked about was maybe doing a discount membership for, uh, city employees to encourage them to use the course. Right now we only have one, uh, who's, who's a full member. Um, so, you know, you've got, we've got one person that would impact now. And I think there, I think there were several others after we kind of talked about it in our staff meeting who would be interested in joining. Uh, if there was a discounted option for that. So, uh, what you would be looking at here, what we proposed is just a fifty percent discount. Um, it could be anything you want. Uh, for city employees and firefighters, um, we have a, we have a deadline on there for March fifteenth or else there's a late fee for annual memberships. Obviously it's not March fifteenth anymore, so we probably won't extend that out, but, you know, that would be kind of a discretion too. Um, you know, we, I, I would suggest if you're going to do it, to just let that apply to membership fees, not to daily greens fees or trail fees or any of those other stuff, because those actually have hard costs associated with those. Like I say, right now it's only one person. So what you're really doing is for, if you did adopt that as a benefit for employees, uh, you're really just foregoing collecting fifty percent of the revenue from those, not really losing anything per se. So right now, family membership, we really have two classes, family membership and single membership. Uh, families at four ninety-five annually and a single is at three seventy-five annually. So that would take it down to two forty-seven fifty for a family or one hundred and eighty-seven fifty for a single. So, you can kind of see that. And I attached the full, the full fee schedule. So if you want to know how much it costs to rent cart space and all that other stuff, it's on there too. So, um, relatively inexpensive, really. Again, you're just foregoing membership. Um, it's kind of a nice little adder for, for employees and could potentially add some members to the course. Yeah, it's just, that, that's kind of what it would look like. And that's what I would recommend if you wanted to do that. And again, we're, we're just here to kind of discuss it today. So.
I think it's a great idea. I like it.
Agree.
Especially if we're doing that with the, uh, gym membership. I mean, might as well extend it to the golf course as well.
Okay.
That's good to me.
Good with it, Mark?
Are you, uh?
I don't golf, but I mean, I'm.
So is the council ready to take action on this matter? Is that what I'm hearing? If so, I'd accept a motion to, uh, to approve that proposal for the fifty percent discount.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Bye. Is there a second?
One second.
Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And we are now to, uh, our city administrators' report, Mr. Styles.
Okay, so got a couple of things. Uh, some pump amnesty, we are finishing the draft on that. We'll have that to you at the April fourth meeting. We had a couple of meetings. Uh, we, we met with Tom Richards and Dick Carr. Uh, Tom, of course, worked for us for a number of years. Uh, and they have talked about being able to do the work to correct these, make these corrections for us. Um, they've estimated a cost of about four hundred dollars a connection. And with some real rough math, uh, guesstimating that we have about ten percent of the homes in the system that could be illegally connected, that would end up being about forty thousand dollars. Uh, which sounds like a lot unless you compare it to what we could end up with if the state, besides we need to do a massive project, um, be a lot cheaper to do this probably. Uh, so we will have that for you at the April fourth meeting. So you can take a look at the, uh, proposed language for that. Uh, sales tax revenue, I want to share that with you. Twenty-three is off to a really good start. Um, collections in February are almost a hundred thousand, which is thirty-six percent up from last year, which was a record high. So, uh, overall, we're at fifteen percent above where we were last year for the same period. And looking back over that, um, you know, we're in really good shape compared to it historically. Um, last year, just so you, I don't know if we really talked about it, we were at one million, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and, or excuse me, ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cents in, in last year for sales tax. So we had a really great year and we're ahead of that already. So hopefully, hopefully it continues.
Hey, Matt.
Yeah.
Could you do the math for us real quick on what that translates into? So we get a million, but that, that, that takes how many sa- how many sales dollars to make that, to make that million? Is it about sixty million?
One percent. Um, so what do you get back? About ten million? Is that right? No, a hundred, yeah, a hundred million. Yeah, a hundred million in total sales.
So, that's, that's not insignificant. I just, I, I, I just think about that number and, you know, think about the amount of business that we do here in Hillsborough. And it, and there's a lot more that's not sales tax, uh, that's tax exempt as well. So,
Correct.
It's a pretty healthy economy.
Yeah, we're doing really well, I would say. Uh, we actually had a conversation, the, uh, state had a bill, uh, that was talking about reducing uh, sales tax on food. And last year when they started this process, they, they carved out an exception for local governments, you know, a lot of locals have sales tax exemptions or, or sales tax specifically. And uh, they were going to try to remove that on food this year too. And we, we were trying to do some back of the napkin math. And we kind of felt like we were somewhere around, if we had to take out the food sales, it would be somewhere around a ten mill increase that we would have to do to replace that revenue. So, uh, it gets to be pretty significant when you start doing the math. Um, yeah, so sales tax is a real important piece of that. Uh, and I think that, that bill actually died i- in the house. So we don't have to deal with it this year, but it's always, always coming down the, always potentially coming down the pipe. Got the K P P bill here for you, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, a little bit on that. Um, expecting that surcharge to continue on there. Of course, our electric rates that, that took effect, uh, this year, so, or this month. So, uh, our customers are not seeing the surcharge anymore. It's just wrapped into the new rate. So, uh, really haven't had too many, I don't think we've fielded any calls about the rate change. So, it's been pretty, uh, pretty low key on that. Health insurance savings report, I got that for February here. We've saved fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars over the first eight months of the plan here compared to our fully insured equivalents. Um, so our, our claims reserve balance is sitting at a hundred and nineteen thousand, which is great. Uh, our planner news in July first, and we kind of looked at some other things we maybe need to address with our plan design. One of them specifically that's come up, uh, is x-rays and imaging. Previously, our benefits, uh, gave you a hundred percent coverage for the first three hundred dollars of that. And when we changed plans, that didn't stick with that. So, we may want to look at, at maybe adding that as part of it for next year. Uh, just to kind of continue or restore a little bit of that benefit. So, um, considering a few other changes too with that. Of course, you'll get to look at all that when we come up for renewal in July, for July first renewal. So, uh, equipment lease purchases, we've got those out. We've been shopping those around. Right now I've got Central National Bank and Marion State Bank. Um, Emprise and Vintage both bowed out because they wouldn't use our documents, uh, which I kind of anticipated. So, I've got one sort of flyer still out there. We'll see what we have for that. Uh, hope to have that back to you at the next meeting. And then we're pleased to announce we've hired Crystal Rickert to join our team as the AP and payroll clerk. Crystal's got a lot of experience in accounts payable and financials, office management, lots of things. So we're real excited for that. She starts next week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday. Um, so that leaves us with Kristin coming on board. That leaves us with two positions still. We've got one in street and one in water and sewer. So, we're working hard with that. We're going to start re-advertising those here next week. So we're going to try to, try to drum up some business. We've had two people look at that water and sewer position and then bow out. So, something going on. We're trying to try to figure out what we can do with that. So, that's all I had, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Styles? Hearing none, that moves us to our second and final public opportunity for the public to address the council. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on to, uh, the, uh, council comments, uh, Councilman Bye.
I don't have anything tonight, sir.
Okay. Councilman McCarty.
No, sir.
Councilman Lawan.
I just wanted to say I'm excited about the water purification system that we're going to put in and that's really, really pretty neat being part of a pilot project. So, I just wanted to say I'm, I'm excited about that.
Great. Councilman Driggers?
No comments tonight.
Okay. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing done, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much and thank you for allowing me to participate remotely.
Me as well. You guys have a great night.
Thanks, gentlemen. Yep.
Good night.
See ya.